Good evening, I'd like to call this hopefully final budget meeting to order. Would everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
Thank you. Last budget review meeting. Make that clear. Okay, multiple dates, I would like to make sure the public and everyone is aware of. On Thursday, January 18th at 7:00 PM, there's a regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. January 28th, did I say 18th? Correction, 28th. I've got two pieces of paper, I'm trying to read from, that's why I confuse. On February 9th, that's the last date to file petition bonds governed by RSA 33: A, RSA 40: 13, Roman Number 2-B-B. February 9th is also the presidential primary, remember it's being held from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Merrimack High School. On February 9th, there's also a special meeting for ratification of any outstanding union contracts. If that occurs, there will be postings related to it. Thursday, February 11th at 7:00 PM is a regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And there will be a public hearing on the 11th during that meeting related to the 2016-17 proposed operating budget, collective bargaining agreements, proposed issuance of debt, petition bond, and other petitioned warrant articles. On Thursday, February 25th, there is a regular council meeting here at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. February 29th is the deadline for posting warrant and budget. February 24th through March 4th is the filing period for candidates running for town offices. February 25th is a regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And March 10th is the town deliberative session. That was quite a...did everybody get that? Are you...March 11th? You were testing me. Yeah, okay. This time I won. Okay, prior to reviewing the budget, Jen Jobin and Yvette Crosher has asked for just a couple of minutes because there were questions related to the library they would like to answer, so please come right up. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So we had sent you what I hope was satisfactory answers to some of the questions that you had the last time we were presenting before you. I sent you a...you can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay, I will...I won't dance around so much. We had sent you ahead of this meeting, a two-page sheet of answers that I hope were satisfactory to you based on some questions that you had for us at the last meeting we had when we were presenting the budget. You had asked for a copy of the formula for our dues, which I sent to you. I don't know if you have any questions about that specifically? You just got it? He just handed it. Okay. So if we want to go through this together, we can do that. So basically, the dues are...they're put together with four different factors that go into this. It's the number of patrons, the number of titles, the number of workstations that we have, and that's access points to our catalog, and then circulation. So each of these factors are weighted equally 25 percent, and then there's an average of the percentages that's taken. And then that percentage is applied to the total G-Milks budget to calculate what our percentage of the budget is. And you should have also gotten a spreadsheet with all of the numbers. Probably too much information, more than you want to know. But, um, so if you want to do your own math, you're welcome to do that. I don't know, in your free time, I guess. But, um, you know, this is really basically how it's plotted out. What I understand from the dues formula committee is that this is a very stable formula. They've experimented with other kinds of formulas in the past, and this is very stable, so it appears to be fair. Obviously, what happens with percentages is anytime one of our pieces of the formula increase or decrease, it's going to affect our percentage. So if we add workstations, if we add titles, if we add patrons, if we increase or decrease our circulation, this is going to affect our percentage. We...we obviously can't predict the future. I think it's a challenge because we want to increase the number of patrons, we want to have more residents applying and having and enjoying the library with their cards, with their account cards. You know, but that's going to increase our percentage in the dues formula. A couple of things that we're talking about and trying to estimate implementing at the library are adding titles from a database. There's one library that is doing a trial right now of a feature called auto renewal. The Bedford Public Library turned on something called auto renewal, which means when your item is overdue, it's going to automatically renew for you. So that means the library is not sending out a notice, they're sending out an email that just says your item has been automatically renewed, but they're also not collecting fines. So this...we just had a meeting last week, and they were looking at some of the information that's been coming back in the first quarter that they've done this. And their circulation has jumped...oh gosh, I...she told me how much percentage it was. It was really, really a drastic jump. And so they're projecting to pay $12,000 in an increase in their dues, just because they're trying to add a feature that makes it convenient for a patron. I mentioned this to my board, and they said, "We're never going to turn that on because the cost is too great." And I said, "All right, I hear you." But what happened at the board level, just to kind of let you know where we're at in the G-Milks board, you know, that means we have to figure out when is the best time to implement something that might be kind of innovative. You know, we want to let our patrons know about what our digital titles are, but if we add them too quickly in one shot to the catalog, that'll change our formula. If we add a convenience like auto renewal for our patrons, that will drastically change our formula. So everyone's kind of, on the board level, taking a step back and trying to plan. What we can expect for an increase is in the cost of our rates from the company that manages this. So I think when we put forward $41,000, that was a worst-case scenario situation. I think we can be a little more conservative and go back to the current level of $37,000, and we would still be able to manage an increase, you know, in those rates, and also if the van... if the van delivery system changes or increases, we would need to absorb that cost, too. In the past, a couple of years ago, we did change the van in the middle of the year, and we were short by like a little over $2,000. So that's something that we're not sure when some of these things can happen, but I think we can be a little more conservative with a worst-case scenario. So I don't know if you've, you know, probably as I'm talking, you were not reading, I don't know. Do you want to talk about this one?
Okay, yeah. We talked a little bit about at our previous budget...can you hear me? That we were looking into the health insurance plan. So at our recent business meeting, we voted to move forward with that health insurance change. So switching to an SOS deductible plan will save us about $14,000. It's the intention of our board to put that towards a 2.5 percent cost of living increase for our staff. We'll be short by a little bit, but we recently had a couple of resignations, so we think we can make up for that in that cost.
Tom, did you want to say something?
Yeah, seems to me that your allocation system with G-Milks is cumbersome and does not...appears to me to not really encourage you to do the things you want to do to get more patrons to come in. So perhaps your G-Milks board needs to reconsider how they allocate the costs out of that. You do.
That was exactly the word that one of the other directors said, is why should we be penalized if we're trying to do something innovative? So we sent the problem back down to the dues formula committee so they could kind of hash it out and come up with some scenarios for us. And this was, you know, this was Thursday when we were talking about it. So I thought it was kind of serendipitous that it came up here, and then it was a problem there, too. I thought that was kind of neat, but, um...
I'm not sure.
I thought that's how I saw it.
When you consider the cost of being innovative...
Right.
Okay, it's not serendipitous, you know?
But she's saying serendipity because we had questions related to it.
Exactly.
And it happened to come up.
Yeah. That's, yes.
So, I mean, you know, it's...I mean, organizations go through this all the time. A constant tinkering and reassessment of, you know, what makes it fair? And still obtains the major goals of your organizations in terms of customer service. And this way, it's a...it, you know, it doesn't...seems to me it doesn't work very...right now, it doesn't work very well, you know?
In a way, you would think that there would be an incentive to being innovative because then that would help all of its members in the end. If there were some measure or allowance for piloting or things, you know, that...the whole group could benefit from that. So you'd think there'd be some mechanism there for incentives. Dan, you had a question?
Right at the beginning, the whole thing is about that $41,000 fee, but what does G-M-I-L-C-S stand for?
You know, that's another...it used to stand for Greater Manchester Interlibrary Consortium. I don't know, I think the S...I don't know what the S was. But we've expanded, you know, this was when they're really belonging to this consortium, it was libraries around Manchester. But now we have Salem with us, and we have the Nesmith Library in Wyndham. So they're...they don't consider themselves anywhere near Manchester and don't want to necessarily be, you know, a suburb of Manchester. But we've, again, recently, over the past year, you have new directors come on and they ask the same questions, "What does this mean?" And it doesn't make sense when I explain it to someone. But they've asked, "Can we rename the group?" And we went through this, oh gosh, probably three months' worth of bringing it up on the agenda, and no one came up with any ideas, and no one wanted to kind of spearhead it. And then you have to deal with the logo change. So they just decided to let it go for a while until someone else really felt passionate about it. And meanwhile, we're still calling it G-Milks, so even though it's not Greater Manchester anymore.
Any other questions? None, well, thank you very much for your response.
Okay.
Appreciate the time you put in.
Did you want to address the streaming video?
Sure, yeah, I mean, that was another question that you had about streaming video. We think it would be a nice complement to the hard copy DVDs and Blu-rays that we have. We're already offering electronic books and magazines, music, streaming video would round this out and make the library offerings more modern. So we still haven't decided on a vendor, but we're still...you know, again, it's exploring what kinds of things locally might be innovative for us, and just seeing how we can space that out.
Excellent. Yes, Jody?
I just wanted to thank them for considering and making the leap for the health insurance. I think it's a win-win for everybody, but I know it's something that people take very seriously, and I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciated your consideration. And I think it's going to work out well for you, and I know I'm the counsel, the budget process, too. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, first thing I'm going to do is open it up to Eileen and Paul and tell us what you have to tell us before we open it up.
Okay. What you have, this sheet of paper here, talks about some...
There's two different ones where I received. What's the title on the top?
Called Town Proposed...
Budget Adjustments?
Town Council Budget Adjustments, yes. These are some things that we talked about during your discussions with the different departments, and we wanted to put them down on a piece of paper for you. If you look over under the appropriation column, you'll see two numbers. One is $13,532 for natural gas, that's a reduction. And gasoline and diesel fuel, $15,571, that's also a reduction. Those are...we've gotten favorable prices on gasoline, natural gas, and gasoline and diesel, and so we feel comfortable with reducing the budget throughout the budget in various departments of those two amounts of money. Then, as we had mentioned during the presentation by the police department, there are...there were several police officers who retired, and people moved up, and new people were hired since the budget was prepared. So that resulted in $50,000 worth of potential, or you should make those cuts because they're more accurate. So there are $79,141...you can tell Paul prepared this. It's not exactly...I'm surprised he didn't put any pennies in there. But anyway...
I was trying.
I know you tried. So worth of appropriations that you can start out by reducing the budget by, the general fund budget. And then the sewer fund also has another reduction that you can make for natural gas in the amount of $10,610, and gasoline and diesel for $2,730. There's also a matching revenue reduction because it's a self-balancing fund. So then there's a revenue increase of $100,000 that we talked about in terms of motor vehicle permit revenue. We had in the budget 4.1... 4.1 million, and now we're proposing 4.25 million. So the result of those two changes in the general fund projected tax rate, just for the general fund, is comes to approximately $180,000. Increase in revenue, decrease in expenditures brings the increase in the tax rate. It was when I presented it to you, or Paul presented it on my behalf, 24 cent increase. With those changes, it is now down to an 18 cent increase.
Okay, I just want to say one thing first. The way I'd like to proceed is as follows. Anyone who's interested in making a motion or a suggestion, whatever, proposing something, I'm going to ask you to make the proposal, then I'm going to have you address whatever the motion or proposal is. I will open it up to the floor for discussion, and then we'll take a vote. Okay, so Dan?
To kind of keep it simple, wait, thank you, Eileen and Paul, because I think all of us, at 24 cents, we want to find ways to get it down, and you did a great job. So I have an easy proposal to get it down even further, which was the...which we had talked about, the 53-week of payroll. So I moved that we use $225,000 from the unreserved fund balance to offset that 53rd week of payroll.
Seconded. Want to order?
Go ahead, Tom.
That's a revenue? It's not an appropriation?
But it can be presented as a suggestion?
That's, yeah, that's...
Not a motion in terms that they have to...
That's right.
It's just like the auto registrations listed here.
That was the feeling behind it.
Okay.
And the quick discussion was that this was one of the things that the unreserved fund balance was for. And so from prior discussions over the last several weeks, I wanted to use to smooth out the tax rate even more, knowing that the next couple hours, whatever we do above that 11 cents or below will hopefully stay as tight as we can.
So it's my understanding that this will come back in September to vote-related and finalize the revenues for the fund balance?
That's right.
Yes, I...
And as Tom M. just pointed out, Tom K., that also applies for the $100,000 as well. But your intention can be made tonight.
Okay. So we can still make a vote, but I just want to make sure it's not a binding motion. Okay, it's more of a guidance. Okay, any questions related to that? Yes, Tom?
I realize it's not a binding number, but it is a number necessary for us to be able to guesstimate what the potential tax increase would be. So if we don't do the number now and come up with some guidance, we can't make a reasonable guesstimate. So I feel it's important to cover this, even if it's not binding.
Excellent, yeah, and that was my intention, to not stop it, but just to make sure it's understood.
Just to mention, because I think for everybody who's paying attention, it's one of those things that only happens every five to seven years, so it's a little out of the ordinary. So if people who are keeping track of this stuff want it to make everybody aware, it's been said before by Paul, but it's one of those things that I don't think you can mention it too often, that the 53rd week happens every five to seven years. Thanks.
Anything else, Jody?
I just wanted to speak in favor of the motion. I'm very much in favor of having a healthy fund balance because I think it's necessary to plan for the event of an emergency, you just don't know. But I've...Eileen and Paul were great at getting us all the numbers, and I like to see the trends especially, so thank you for yours, 13, 14, and 15. So I think we're at a healthy number right now, and I think the $225,000, like you said, a one-time deal, the 53rd week only happens every five to seven years. I think that's a reasonable and appropriate thing to do, so for that reason, I would support the motion.
Excellent. Bill?
I want to thank you, Madam Chair, to dovetail off a Council of Valen call. One of the things that Eileen has shared with us since her tenure being here town manager, that a healthy percentage is anywhere from 4% to 8%, and right now, we're at 6%, so we're comfortable. So this is, in my eyes, an appropriate use of the unfunded cash balance.
Excellent. Anyone else? Seeing none, let's take a vote. The motion was made by Dan Dreyer, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed?
Can you just repeat the motion, it was for the $225,000?
$225,000.
Say it again, that's fine.
I moved to use $225,000 in the unreserved fund balance to offset the 53rd week of the...
Okay, we all...what?
They were flashing mics, I don't know if it was heard on TV.
Okay, so I believe we all said, yes, they were all 7-0-0, so we're all set with that motion. Okay, any other, Paul?
Before we move any further into cuts or anything, for my lack of my spreadsheet, the proposal that the town manager made, if we can have a determination one way or the other on the cuts that the town manager proposed and the additional revenue for auto registration, greatly appreciated.
We have a motion, Tom?
Yeah, move the reduction of the various line items for natural gas to total $13,532.
Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mahan, seconded by Tom Koenig. Any further discussion? Yes, Eileen?
You should say general fund, okay? You don't mind?
Say general.
In the general fund. Because we have the same in the sewer fund, so...
Right, I'm sorry, yes, the general fund. The, yeah, the general fund appropria...yeah, general fund appropriation.
You accept the change, Tom?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, 7-0-0.
Move the reduction of $15,571 for the general fund budget for gasoline and diesel and various line items. Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, 7-0-0.
And finally, move $50,038, a reduction of $50,038 in various payroll lines in the police department.
Seconded. Tom Mahan made the motion, Tom Koenig seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
None opposed, 7-0-0.
Reduce the natural gas appropriation in the revised general fund, which is essentially the wastewater...I'm sorry.
Wastewater.
I'm sorry. In the wastewater account, budget $10,610 for natural gas.
Motion made by Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, 7-0-0.
And finally, the move a reduction of $2,730 for gasoline and diesel fuels in the wastewater budget. Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
None opposed, 7-0-0.
And that'll keep DRA happy, right?
Thank you for the reminder, Paul. Okay.
So for point of clarity, we're now looking at a current proposed appropriation of $34,273,625, which reflects a proposed tax rate of $5.67.
Paul, a minute?
I come up with $5... I come up with $5.63. What's important is the number.
Eileen?
Could I just ask you to do the revenue for the...
Who's going to do that?
Yeah, okay.
Auto registration, Tom, you want to do that? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, but I'm going to change it slightly. I would like to propose the $150,000 increase in the auto registration revenues for next year. I think the numbers we have are very conservative and have been for multiple years in a row. I know Paul and Eileen have recommended 100...I think 150K will give us a little bit more cushion, and yet still have plenty of expected income from the auto registration, so that would be my motion.
Second?
Seconded.
Sorry, I didn't mean to talk to him before I...
No, that's right. Dan Dreyer, second. Speak to the motion anymore, Tom?
Well, just as I tried to point out, 100K is...if you look for the past several years, we've always been off by a fair amount. I know we were quick to drop that amount when auto registrations were dropping. We've been very slow to raise that amount with auto registrations climbing, and we've been getting auto registrations that have come in significantly higher than the anticipated amounts year after year, and I don't see any reason to believe that it's going to be any different this year with reduced gas prices and things of that nature. People go out and buy new cars, or they replace their leased cars, or they do whatever they do, that increases our auto registrations. And I would like to just put a little bit more in there to try and offset some of the expenses that we're incurring.
Dan, do you want to speak to it yet, at all? Tom? Tom first, then Jody?
Well, are you taking into account, we're looking 18 months out?
Yep.
Okay.
If you look back at the last several years, we've had significant amounts of overages.
Okay, well, as long as money stays cheap, they'll be able to offer the incentives to buy the cars. And you're counting on that.
You betcha.
My money's with Tom.
Which one?
Jody?
I just had a question, significant. Do you have an average, do you have some kind of a number in mind, Tom, that we've been...
Historically.
Under, yeah, every year?
Yes, I do.
And then I want to ask Paul and Eileen how comfortable they are with this before we vote. Just, it doesn't have...
Just, it doesn't have to be exact, I'm just looking for some kind of a-
Well, the actual for 2415 was 4,400, or 4.43 million, 4.4 million, and the estimated for this budget year is 3.97 million. And they went up to 4.15, we're going up to 4.25 if we do the 100, 4.3 if we do the 150.
Okay.
So we're still below what actually came in at 14 and 15. It looks like 13, 14 came in at 4.256, based on Paul's numbers. So even if we go back two years, we're, we're still in that ballpark of numbers.
Okay.
And if you look back further, it's in the revenue column. It, it's been steadily increasing since 2010, 11.
Okay.
And you wanted Paul's opinion?
Yeah, and ask Paul, yeah.
Paul and Eileen?
I would, it seems like a reasonable thing to do. We've just been ultra-conservative.
Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, the- Last year's budget was 3.975. Hate to put you on the spot, Paul, have you figured out Q2 revs yet, or?
We're, we're tracking at, we're tracking around 4, 4.3, 4.4, right now.
Right now, based on?
Based on everything we have through December, which is, everything's pointing to a- Last year was a good year, so, you know, for the auto industry, they broke records in sales. That means we'd be in the second year. We, I don't have heartburn with the 4.3 million dollars. We'll just have to keep an eye on it and track it, but I believe we, it's, it's nothing, we're not stretching it.
And I mean conceivably, you've, you've projected 3.9, 3.975, and you're thinking you had 4.4, so we're looking at closer to half a million over from what you-
This year, yeah, yeah, and the-
I understand, I understand, I'm just-
We, we're looking at, you know, when we did the number, we were looking at 4.2 million dollars. And every year, Diane could speak to this more, but every year, the, the portion, the percentage is small, gets less and less. And when we were looking at the 4.2 as new cars coming in, we figured that there would be a drop, because it would be the second year or the third year of a new car. And the other thing is, is that people are not buying brands making new, they're buying used. Well, the used cars of today, the 2010, for instance, 2010 Corolla, still sells for $10,000 versus three years ago.
So percentage-wise?
Yeah, percentage-wise, so, you know, excuse me.
Yes or no?
Sorry. 4.3 is a yes, why we projected 3.9, it was a bunch of factors that we were looking at at the time over almost two, two years ago now.
And, and even still, if you're projecting 4.4 and we're looking to talk 4.3, we're still kind of-
Within that.
Within that margin of, margin of error, I guess, would be the phrase I would use. Okay.
We're comfortable with the number, Diane's comfortable with the number.
Okay. Okay, the motion's made, Tom?
Yeah, just another consideration, the amount of budget lapses over the last couple of years have been fairly large, and so, in that regard, I think $50,000 is nothing. In the scheme, relatively speaking, yeah, yeah, the 5, the $50,000 is $50,000. Okay, but then when you're looking at a 38, $34 million budget, and a $4 million estimated, I don't know, it's not that, it's, it's something we can handle if it doesn't go the way we think it's going to go.
Okay, motions on the floor, was made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Dan Dwyer. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, 7-0-0.
I further move that we reduce the wastewater revenue expectations by 13,340 dollars to account for the reduction in the appropriations of 13,340 dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Dan Dwyer.
And these are intent motions, not absolute motions.
Right.
Okay, any issues with that? Eileen?
Eileen? Just to give you a tally, as the council board just requested, although something different has happened. We're at, now at a 9 cent increase.
And that's prior to, well, actually, it wouldn't change anything.
So we're at 5.58? Okay.
Okay, can we take a vote on the motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Dan Dwyer, to reflect that 13,000, yes, Tom?
No, I just was saying-
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Okay, I'll hurry.
Don't hurry, take your time.
Just get a probe and back in me. So we're presently at 5.58, not, what is it again? The, what's this amount, cents?
$5.58 cents per thousand.
Nine cents?
Nine cents.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
So the change in-
I wrote it down, but I couldn't believe it, go ahead.
So the revenue adjustment's now to 150,000 altogether?
No.
No.
It's 150,000 plus the $225,000 for the fund balance, because fund balance is considered revenue. Use, use of fund balance is considered revenue.
So you're calculating that in, okay. Okay, so we're all set for now, yes, Jody?
I wanted to make a motion, it won't actually have a monetary impact, but I spoke to Eileen and Paul this afternoon, and they said that I should be making a formal motion and having a formal vote. I move that the town council approve the purchase of a reader board for solid waste disposal for the transfer station purposes only. And I was advised by Paul and Eileen, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was already money in this budget that would cover that, it wouldn't actually increase the bottom line, but that I should put this out here formally and have a- Right, the current budget, sorry.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Dan Dwyer. You want to speak to that a little bit more, we have some questions over here. Go for it.
He's just raising his eyebrows at me down there again.
He does that, he does that, he'll get you some. He snickers, he raises his eyebrows.
Right, well, well, I mean, I was ready to ask to have the money, an additional $15,000 put into the budget, but Paul and Eileen told me that wasn't necessary. But my intent is, after having the budget discussions, this go-around, it appeared to me that this was something that would be very useful and would pay for itself with the potential increase in recycling that it would encourage. So it was something that I wanted to take action on, because I think, well, I gave the impression too, to our staff, that that was something that I was interested in supporting, a request that they had made, so.
Any discussion?
Any budget questions about where it comes from or where it's going to go, Tom? You're going to have to ask Paul and Eileen, I'm sorry, I don't know.
No, my, may I? My only question is, why are we talking about this year's budget during the budget meeting for 2016, '17? I, seemed like a, out of-
Eileen? Yeah.
I, Jody had called me today and asked me to add it to this year's budget, because it was something that was very important to her, and she, and since it was brought up as part of the budget, I just thought that it might be important that she just bring it up tonight, so that, that everybody would know that we had listened to her and to the staff. And it doesn't necessarily relate to this budget, but it, it's just a, you know, a notation, and to see if you concur that you would like to do that.
While we're gathered together.
While you're gathered together.
I wouldn't disagree, I'm just curious on protocol whether it's appropriate to try and make a vote on that tonight.
We don't have to make a vote. We get a consensus?
The reason, the reason why it was being brought forward tonight is, like, like Jody said, she wanted to move it into the 16, '17 budget. You don't have to take the vote tonight to do it, but if there was consensus, then the town manager could start working up the proposal to bring it in front of the council to get it done.
Okay, so we don't really need a motion, but you need a sense from this council?
Correct.
Okay, does anyone have heartburn? Go ahead.
I don't have heartburn, I'm just curious, is, is that the $35,000 reader board, or is that?
It's, it's electronic sign board, it's the, it's not like the sign at the police department, it's just electronic portion.
Like we see at construction sites and so on.
No, 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 at the police department, just that little piece to go underneath the sign.
Oh, okay.
It runs the message underneath, that's what the 15,000 would be.
Okay.
Okay, it appears that you have approval, good, positive consensus. Thank you, Jody, for bringing that. Oh, Bill?
Yes. And along the same vein, I had wanted to add monies into the line item for the Griffin Street boat ramp access, and after conferring with Eileen and Paul today, I wanted to move that we task the town manager to begin the process of an engineering study for the Griffin Street boat ramp access road improvements from railroad bridge to the boat ramp utilizing existing funds in the current year budget. Same thought process as Council of Valen Court, just-
So it's not a, but, it's not a motion per se?
Nope.
But you would like to be able to direct the town manager with a consensus of the town council to move forward with an engineering study?
And, and I'm sure the council has read the, the email trails that have gone on between Eileen, Paul, Kyle, and myself, and Finley, and it's not something that can be done in one fell swoop, I feel, and Kyle's suggesting that it can be done in three different phases, and I, I like the idea of, of phasing it in so that we, we do it right, especially where some of the issues with the Merrimack River will, will need to be addressed, at least getting the ball, moving forward on what I feel would be a, a good amenity to add to our community.
I think for the matter of public information, we mentioned emails, correspondence. Can you give a, well, give a 30-word summary?
Of?
I want to count. Basically, they're saying that you had inquired with the state.
Right, I inquired with Fish and Game regarding the process to asking whether or not state funds existed for us to build a ramp. In short, there is a fund, there is federal monies and state monies that fund the fund. There are three communities that are ahead of us, in that if Merrimack were to entertain participating with the state, we would be looking at a timeline of 2020 before we could begin. Ergo, I felt that was way too long for this project, and, like I said, talking with Eileen and Paul, and with Kyle, we've got the, the funding in this current year's budget to begin-
That was mentioned during the budget.
To begin the process, I feel it's an appropriate time to, in my opinion, I feel it's an appropriate time for us to start.
Okay, I just wanted to make it public.
No, I appreciate it, I apologize, and thank you for the transparency.
Just to be able to get, you know, that you had sought out information about it, because I know there's been some interest expressed-
Correct.
About the boat ramp, and at least this is demonstrating initiation of that, because an engineering study would have to be done anyway-
Right.
In order to determine what kind of permits they do, testing or whatever. So Eileen, do you feel that that's reasonable? Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I, I do not consent to that, and so I'm not sure how you want to proceed with this, but I, I don't feel like the boat ramp reaches the level of requirement for the town of Merrimack that, for example, the sign to reduce recycling does. I, I'm not prepared at this point, I've been hearing about that boat ramp ever since I was a town councillor.
Yeah.
And, or a, a member of the Board of Selectmen, excuse me. And I'm not, I just don't feel like it's appropriate for us to suddenly jump up and start spending money on that, that proposal, given the difficulties with Griffin Street, the size of the bridge under the river, and the other complications and, and whatnot. And the only justification I've heard so far about worrying about it now is that if the town of Merrimack doesn't have access to the Merrimack River, it just seems inappropriate. And I, I don't think that, you know, tying the name of the town and the name of the river together through a boat ramp is a, is an appropriate way for us to be spending the town's money at this point. Thank you.
Tom Mahan?
Well, to, to address Tom's concern about the, about this issue, we did, we did talk about, at least Nancy and, and I, and Eileen, and Paul, and Kyle this afternoon about, he did it, you know, he came in, gave, showed us the map, he showed us the, the schematic that he had regarding that, and he, you know, he was very upfront with us as, this is not easy. And the, the other issue involved with the engineering study is, it will either demonstrate that it is not easy, or we need to do something different, or it can be done in a certain way. So it, it can answer, it could answer both questions, potentially. Either tell us, you're wasting your time, or it can be done, but it's going to be this way. So I don't know whether that helps you out or not, but-
Nope, thank you.
Jody?
Well, we did talk about that piece of it.
Yep.
Right.
Thank you, I don't necessarily have an issue with the engineering study. I understand what Tom Mahan is saying, as far as, you'll get some more information about moving forward, and I get that, but my concern, and I share Tom Koenig's concerns as well, is for the engineering study is just one step, it's for the future budget implications that this would mean, because there were some ballpark figures tossed around, and it was about $200,000, and I'm just concerned that if we move forward with this engineering study, and then we don't intend to fund any of the construction and the future budget, that I think that's kind of a disingenuous, I don't know what, motion by the, the council too. And personally, while I understand the quality of life issues, and I know there are lots of people that have been asking for this for a long time, I just think we've got some other things coming down the pike in the immediate next year or two that would warrant a better, again, in my opinion, totally my opinion, a better expenditure of $200,000 than this, at, just at this point in time. So that's my concern with going forward, so I guess I, I don't consent to it either because of the budget implications that it would mean for additional work over and above the engineering study. Thank you.
Emily?
I'm just curious why we wouldn't put this on for an actual agenda item to have the full discussion, because I, I'm in a group, I think that it is a quality of life thing that would be a nice addition, and we've, you know, I think we have to hash out how it might have those impacts that Jody just alluded to, and so on. But I didn't know that it had to happen tonight. I, I would rather have a full agenda item having this conversation, so-
We, we can put it on for later on in December, not the 11th.
But because we do have the money aside that we've spoken about, and so, we, as a council, have to decide if we think it's an appropriate time or not. Broken out in the different phases that have, you know, was suggesting, to me, on the surface seems appropriate, but again, we haven't had any real dialogue about it. And so, I would appreciate that.
Is it, how is the feelings of the council? Would you like to just ta-, not table it, but put it off, or put it as an agenda item? For more in-depth discussion?
Yes, sure.
Everybody? Okay, let's do that, so you can schedule that, Paul. Okay.
It's Tuesday, 59. In more ways than one.
You're out of the country. Yeah, business, very important business. Okay.
Dan Dwyer won't be coming back with a tan this year.
Yes, now something that has to be done immediately. Okay, sounds good, because we have to have Dan and Tommy. Okay, open up for any other motions or discussions. Oh my goodness gracious.
On the budget?
On the budget. Let's get back to the budget. Yes, Finley?
On, on the GIS funding, we, I think we're going to be funding $60,000. It will, anyhow, we'll be funding an amount that will wrap up the GIS whole situation. I may be making more of my own mind about it than it really is, and I know none of it's illegal, it's all very legal, because drone conversations, all, but I don't, I understand that we utilize the aerial photographing for enforcement of, of town ordinance and so on, and, and while I understand that anybody can fly their drone over your house and sneak a peek at what you're doing, I, I have difficulty with that. And I want to be sure, for me, that that's not what our plan is to use that for, that component of the GIS project.
Yes, Eileen?
To my knowledge, we don't use drones at all.
No, 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 I know, with the aerial, I'm talking about the aerial photography that this will, will bring to completion. I just wanted to be sure, we don't use those aerial photographs as a form of enforcing things. I mean, if we have real complaints and everything, I want the town to enforce those, but I, I just have a little heartburn over looking at people's houses, because we happen to have the aerial view. It's just, and again, it might be- It's just, and again, it might be building up more of my own mind than it's really worth, but that's where I am.
I guess I would just say to that, that aerial photography is what it is. And if someone comes in to complain, when they look at the GIS data and sees something that they, that shouldn't be there, they can use that information. We won't be going to try and bust people on things. We're not going to, we're not looking for that. But the facts are the facts, and if somebody sees something on there that's factual and brings it in to us, we need to investigate it.
So then should I be removing $65,000 from this current proposal?
I don't understand what you mean.
Oh, we'll complete the funding for that, which would eliminate that part of the project.
Because you're not comfortable with.
I just, yeah, I'm just uncomfortable with it. And again, I know it's there, and everybody can do it, and it's all legitimate and legal and everything. It's just, you know, something that I'm just not comfortable with.
Tom?
Google Maps.
I get it. I get it.
You can do the same thing with Google Maps than you could, that you could do with a regular aerial photography.
Well, then that's.
And the aerial photography is designed to, Tom, Tim, thank you.
Let me finish my comment, then. Then if that's accurate what Tom's saying, I see no need to spend $135,000 on that proposal, then.
Why don't we get some response from Tim?
Thank you, members of the council. The GIS expenditure for the GIS project is for the development of new base mapping for the community. That is done from the digital ortho-photography that is done to a specific scale, so that it is accurate to a certain degree, that's accurate for the mapping purposes for which we use it for. That mapping will then be used not only for the aerial photographs themselves, but topography, pavement, structure, it's all of the different data layers that the town utilizes. The, I understand the concern regarding enforcement, but I can reiterate, my department enforcement is not something that we go out of our way to go after. We simply respond to service requests that come in from members of the public. Even if we drive by and we see something, it's not something that we actively go after, because I do not have the staff nor the resources in order to deal with the enforcement types of things on a full-time basis, given the staffing in the department. I will say that, given the age of our existing aerial photography in the system, we are woefully out of date in terms of the type and accuracy of information we're able to give to the public, as well as the other departments that utilize that data. It is a very important part of making sure our GIS is current, up to date, and it also eliminates and allows us to do in-house a lot of what we have to now either contract out through National Regional Planning Commission or other private consultants, because the information that we have is now going back, I believe, to 2007, which is, we're going on ten years of data that sorely needs to be updated.
Thanks, Dan. Are you going to make a motion?
No, no, I won't.
Okay, okay. Yes, Dan?
Question for Finley. After, after hearing Tim speak, does it reassure you more about what the program's about? Did it ease your concern somewhat? That it's more, the layers and the involvement of the overall?
Well, and I get that, you know, I do. So I'm good.
I'm not looking to like to change your mind, I'm just curious if maybe that was a, because I was, I understand what you were saying about it.
I understand that, it wouldn't, those components wouldn't work. And so I'm all set.
Chaney?
Conservation Commission relies heavily on the GIS maps also, for a lot of their work.
Tom?
And Finley, I certainly agree with the premise of your, what you're saying, and wouldn't argue with you there, but it becomes one of those bad situations where you have to outweigh the good and the bad.
Well, and that's, I mean, you're into commentary.
When they talked first about putting the assessing database online, people were worried that people could look up my house and see what the size of my den was, or something like that. I understand, there are certainly issues you can always balance out. There's good and bad. But having the GIS system with all of the overlays, with the sewers, with the roads, with the power lines, with whatever other overlays that are involved with it. Provides just tremendous assets to our community, both retail and commercial, and, or residential and commercial. And so I don't know how you finally balance that out. It's like any of the other issues that are involved in the federal government or the state government with politics, with, you name it, guns, anything. I mean, there's always a balancing act to be made there. And I think this GIS system outweighs the potential harm that individuals could create from it, based on the value to the community. And I'm not preaching to you, I'm kind of saying that for the purpose of everybody watching.
And I appreciate it.
Tom?
Paul, is the total appropriation that we're talking about now, $34 million, 273,625?
That is correct.
Then I move that the council recommend $34 million, 273,625, and move it to the public hearing.
Motion made by Tom Mahon, seconded by Tom Koenig. Do you have a question?
What was the number again?
It's right here, it's the exact one.
It is the exact number, I didn't.
No. It's not my intent to shut off discussion if somebody else's other things are bringing up. It's just to formally put the number on the table for us to discuss and to decide where we're going to end up.
Okay.
And there's no vote needed to be taken right now, if there are other actions that other members of the council wish to take.
I have something, but it's not related to this budget, so I'll wait. It's just a request. Okay, any further discussion? There is none. We have a motion on the table, made by Tom Mahon, seconded by Tom Koenig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition, 7-0-0. So as we stand right now, tax rate's 5.58, is that correct?
Estimated at $5.58.
And that reflects a 9% increase?
Nine cents.
Nine cents.
You've been reading the leader.
I was just wondering if you were paying attention, Tom.
You've been reading the leader.
1.64, Nancy.
See, now you don't want me as chair anymore, see? I'm trying to tell you.
Is that what you're doing?
That's right.
You're not, you're not the first chair that has made an inadvertent.
Come April, come April.
You're not the first.
Get me out of here.
First council chair that hasn't made an inadvertent error.
Won't be my first and won't be my last.
That's right.
Okay, I just have a request, and it really has, and it has to do with the fire department. Obviously, we have continued with the overtime proposal. What I would like to request, that the fire department keep additional data during this time, so that we can use that data for next year in consideration. And that data has to do with, I know you're going to have dots coming at me as I'm telling you this, but just sort of keep a trend sheet or something. As you use overtime, well, who is it that you're replacing? Is it an officer or a regular record file? And like a daily basis, just keep a log, that's all. And how often did we have to bring in one versus two? That kind of thing, to see if there's a pattern. And was it vacation versus sick? That will help us next year, when we're talking about positions. That will help us look at the data and make a determination for next year. Okay? The other thing is, and I'm not sure there's anything to do about this, but I'll just bring it up for consideration. We talked about safety being a major issue. I have concern between now and June. Is there any way, is there, I don't know how much overtime is available, how much would be needed, but I, if people are saying that going down to seven is dangerous, I think we should address that. And I would like to say, and I don't think there's anything we can do, but if there is an opportunity to be able to fix that between now and the end of June, I would like it to be considered. Okay? Yes, Dan?
So when you say that, other than hiring, you know, getting something on the ballot to actually hire more men, if there's seven is that number, and I've heard nothing from any of us that seven was ever acceptable, it always seems to have been that eight. And real quick, if we've got two engines and it takes three men per engine, that's six, and then we've got two guys on an ambulance, so for everybody listening, the reason why eight seems to be the number is with our two stations, that is the proper number that we've been told and shown, that eight seems to be the number that is required.
But we also know that it has gone down to seven. And what I'd like to do.
This year.
Right, this year.
That's right.
And what I'd like to do is make an attempt to have not that hap, have that not happen.
Okay.
It's identified as a safety issue. And if there's a method by which we can do that, to, I'm not saying all the time.
Right.
But if we can try, then that admits an issue we should address.
Well, can I continue then?
Absolutely.
In a debate format?
Yeah.
And hopefully provide an answer to this dilemma. As I've stated before, I think a half million dollars is way too high for overtime. When we given the data, we waited a long time for it to come in, for me, the data's clear. We have a professional disagreement, me and my manager, with the number, how they, how they're deciphered. I decipher eight men, but eight doesn't really mean eight. After all that data's coming in, the department wants eight men, but maybe it's 30% of the time, this was the debate we had, maybe it's 50% of the time, that they don't get eight. So they're on the phone, calling in for that guy to come in, in OT. Now, if it was 150,000 in overtime, or 200,000, I don't think any of us would have any heartburn. It's a half a million with no end in sight, because if you don't improve on the eight, which again, isn't really ever eight, a lot of the time.
Which is why I asked for the data.
Right. So we asked for the data and we get it. Now my common sense.
Additional data.
Okay. But my brain puts in 36 men, 12 supervisors, 24 guys, that's 36 men. I go 36 times three weeks vacation.
And women.
And I'm not talking about National Guard training, I'm not talking workman's comp, any other outside, just pure vacation. My brain says that's 100, over 100 weeks are gone. That means to me, a guy and a half or two guys every week isn't there. So I don't know how you ever get to eight, other than OT.
Exactly.
So my question would become, it would be prudent to ask the public and put it on the ballot, and ask for four guys, not only an attempt to reduce overtime, but it seems to be the most prudent thing to do when we talk about the growth, about the hotels, about the apartments, and that the crew is a lot of rookies and they want more training. Well, it's going to take six months to a year to maybe get them on board, and by the time two or three years rolls around, it just, it seems to be evident, if you don't ask for it this year, then you come up with a reason that it's going to be the following year and the following year. And then in my way of thinking, to me, it's win-win, in the sense that if you ask the public and they say no, then you're never going to hear me complain about overtime again. If the number's 500,000 this year, and we ask for four men, and the town says no, then you know what? Next year, it goes to 800,000, and I'm lucky enough to be reelected, 90 days away. You won't hear me talk about that next year in a budget.
Can I rebuttal?
Sure.
Okay. I'm rebutting first.
I'm aware.
First of all, there was a demonstration by the department that this is what they wanted, number one. Number two, that's the reason why I asked for additional data, to be able to make that determination. Number three, in the year, there's going to be specific plans that will also help justify the positions, because there's going to be more buildings built, more development, all that kind of thing. And before, don't you think there's going to be enough things on the ballot for the citizens to decide on, and putting that in? Might be tough.
And that's a question I don't like to think about, because I don't think it's important. Whether there's three questions or 10 questions, let me put it to you this way. So once another year goes by that we don't ask the dump of the highway garage to be replaced, because, oh, this year we've got four firefighters on it, or this year we're going to ask the school not to come up with their building plan again. We can always, this is like kicking the can down the road, and I just don't see the point. We've been here too long together as a group to know that this year, we did make a conscious decision not to put the highway garage off. Nothing's changed down there. The bathrooms are still inadequate, it's still unsafe environment in many cases. And as we said before, if it wasn't a municipal building, OSHA would have shut it down a long time ago. So we're kicking the can on that. So if not this year, you say next year? So we're back to saying, okay, what, don't we ask the public again, because there's too many questions.
Well, see, what I'm responding to you is that, to me, provides additional data to make a decision.
I personally, just for me, I don't need any more data.
More, okay.
I've heard the number seven far too often. And from, I said from the beginning, my whole thing is about a half a million dollars is far too much to spend on overtime. There needs to be a different formula here to correct that.
Okay. Bill, you want to make one then, Jody?
Yeah, I agree with Council Dwyer. I sat here Thursday night listening to the chief, both assistant chiefs, talk about the loss of institutional knowledge that has impacted the fire department. I look back to the data back in 2010, 2011, where we actually did have more firefighters that we lost either through retirement or tradition, or eliminated through the budget, that's fine. But in the grand scheme of things, if it's difficult, if it's difficult to hire paramedics to come into Merrimack, when we've seen the last five years, our service calls last year, 65% of our service calls were either basic life support or advanced life support, that tells me that while community is slightly getting older, I know we don't like to admit that, the other flip of the coin.
It's getting older.
It's getting older. The other, sorry, Tom?
Slightly?
Okay.
Speak to yourself.
The flip of the coin is 65% of the time, you know, our fire departments are running, if not to St. Joe's or Catholic Medical Center, to Southern New Hampshire or Ellie. It's one of the four. In the report, and the questions that were presented Thursday night, that the fire department put together, ideally, they would like, they would like three paramedics per shift. When you sat and did the arithmetic, it justified the addition of additional four firefighters. The fire department wants to be able to train their own, to be able to train their own firefighters. We only allocate $10,000 a year for one person to be selected to go through, through paramedic training, and if but for the grace of God, if we can hold on to that particular individual, we're very lucky. I think it's not just adding four firefighters to our, to our staffing. I think it's a bigger picture of making a commitment to making sure that our salaries for the paramedics are competitive with other communities in our region, and also that we're not just limiting it to one paramedic per year, but maybe figuring out, can we afford to put two through a paramedic school? Maybe it's staggered. We're a growing community, but in the same token, as I said on Thursday night, it's not just saving lives and suppressing fire. The majority of our calls are going to a hospital, and addressing a concern, whether it be basic life support or advanced life support, 65%. I don't expect that number to be dropping anytime, anytime soon. So.
Speaking of the devil.
Speaking of the devil. I guess, I guess, I guess they're coming to get me.
You planted that, didn't you?
I just would say, it's a larger question that, you know, your overtime point is well taken. I think once we get through the budget, you know, once we get through the election, we really ought to talk about it in May or June. I think it needs.
Well, and I have no issue with that whatsoever.
I mean, I'm not saying that this is dire, but I think we need to have a sense of urgency right now. You know, I don't think what Council Dwyer is asking is unreasonable, considering the track record regarding ballot initiatives that have been in this community. So I think if we, if we do it, I think we need to approach it in a thoughtful and strategic way, as opposed to trying to make it a line item in our budget. I think.
And that's, right, that's, that would be for consideration by the council. How it was done.
Right.
Right. Jody?
Thank you. Couple points, you talked about between now and June. My impression was the reason that there's only seven guys on now is because there isn't enough money in the overtime budget to add the eighth firefighter. So if there were money in the overtime budget, they would add the eighth firefighter. That's how they come up with the seven, not because the seven is some number that they think the town council has told them they can't go over, it's because they're bound by budget constraints. So that's one point I want to make.
I understand, right. I understand, right.
Second point I want to make is, I agree with Dan about letting people vote on things. I have no problem with that. Putting things out, however many ballot items you have is what you have. But at the same time, if we were to put some kind of a warrant article out there, the onus would be on us to make sure that the people really understand what it is they're voting on and what the potential impact is. Prior to our meeting, our past meeting, I, like Dan, couldn't understand how adding four firefighters to staff wouldn't reduce the overtime budget. It made no sense to me. But after listening to the presentation, talking to Eileen and Paul several times about it, I understand now it has to do more with staffing, shifts, and scheduling than, than other things. So, if we were to add four firefighters now to this budget, I want to make sure people understand with, that that will increase, because we were told that increasing four new firefighters would be around $370,000. And if we did that, that would only reduce the overtime. I've heard a few different numbers, but I've heard somewhere between 40 to 60,000 dollars. So that's still, adding four firefighters would be an increase of upwards of $300,000 to the budget that we just voted and approved to move forward. And, and that's, that's a reality, that's not something that you can play around with. I haven't made that up. I think, and I support having adequate staffing for so many reasons, I already talked about this. But I think, Dan, some of the things you want to change that would have some, would have more of an impact on that, isn't something that we can accomplish through the budget process. It sounds to me like you want to change things that might have to do with contractual obligations and negotiations. And if that's, you know, something that you really feel strongly about doing, then that's the angle, that's the place to do it. I don't think we can, I understand your frustration, believe me, I do, because it does seem absurd to have that amount of overtime.
Unpredictable.
But I, it's not something that we can change with this budget process publicly sitting here at the table. So, I don't support right now, at this point in time, adding four firefighters, but I do believe, as several of my fellow counselors do, that the time is going to come very soon, if not in the very near future, that we will have to add to staff. But for those mathematical reasons, budgetary impacts, I wouldn't support doing it this year. Thank you.
Finley, do you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Nancy. I, I agree with Jody's comments, because our overtime budget of this current year is $460,000, if I did the math correctly, approximately anyhow. The proposal added $95,000 to it. If we add nine guys, it's the 375,000 or so. And even if we reduce our current overtime, even 100,000, we're still deeply into, you know, added expense to the community, to the tax rate and so on. So, it is, as everybody seems to recognize, a half million dollars is a ton of money for overtime. But I get it, and I think it's the tool that we have to work with right now, and I think it's appropriate, working under our own parameters of how we are trying to focus on that ultimate tax rate in the end. So.
I didn't mean to open Pandora's box.
Did a good job.
I did a good job.
You were almost out of it now.
Another reason why not to put me as chair. Yes?
I just, I know that we've been talking about, about eight and, eight and seven, you know, but in, in my eyes, requesting eight is actually seven. Requesting nine is actually eight. If eight is the ideal number that the fire department sees necessary to adequately staff every shift, then the rule of thumb should be allocating nine firefighters, because based on Council Dwyer's arithmetic, you know, 36, you know, at the now, 36 employees, three weeks of vacation, you know, that's, that's two years' worth of, of employees that are, that are not going to be down at, down at, down at the firehouse. So, even the, the fire chiefs, if I remember correctly, when, when they can't fill summer with the overtime, and they have seven, and I apologize, chief, if, and I apologize, but I think they use the term, we're rolling the dice on that particular shift, as it relates to being a man now. And I think that's the concern that I, that I, I really have. So, I think, you know, people need to be prepared that if we do ask for four firefighters, we're, we're not asking for four firefighters for the sake of putting four firefighters. We're asking for it because there is a need, and we need to, we need to train them, so that when paramedics do get called out, that they're, they're doing what they need to do to get a, to get a person to, to a hospital. I mean, that's, that's, that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Yes, Dan? Closing.
In closing on the subject, culturally, overtime isn't the end-all either. There's plenty of people who don't want the overtime. They're coming in for their fellow brothers. They're going in begrudgingly. They don't want to go in, whether they have a second job, or whether they want to go out with their wife, maybe want to coach their kids in a soccer game. They can't, because they're always working. It's going to come and bite you. So you keep piling on the overtime to a bunch of guys that maybe have to, don't, aren't particularly, ooh, yay. Not everybody is so gung-ho on overtime.
Right.
So, it's a bigger picture.
I agree.
I think everybody knows that anyway, but just wanted to say that.
Okay. I think I should be quiet now. Okay, is there anything else that anyone would like to bring up? Does she have a question, Eileen? Yes?
I guess the, the question, the budget issue is kind of behind us. But Dan just brought up another topic, and that is that he would like to put on warrant articles. So I'm asking you if you want to.
I'm not bringing it up.
Okay.
Okay. I think I should hurriedly ask for.
Well, very quickly, thank you to Eileen, Paul, and the department heads.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, would you like to make?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mahan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't see any opposition, 7-0-0.